Scott Sanders is going to kick you off with an overview of Sanitary Sewer Enterprise.
Perfect.
Part of our budget cycle, so. Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
Scott Sanders, Finance Director. This morning's budget discussions are on our two sewer utilities, Sanitary Sewer and Stormwater. They are very similarly positioned in that you're going to see that they are efficiently run, their operations are kept at a growth pretty close to inflation, and they both, though, have capital, future borrowings that are necessary, and so that is what is driving the differences in rates and whatnot. So I'll get into the details of that with you. Make sure this is turned on. So when we look at our entire budget, the two utilities fit under the enterprise funds. With Sanitary Sewer, you'll see in the mid $30 million range, a little over a third of the enterprise funds, and the Stormwater, about a third less than that as far as the size. We've already worked or talked about the solid waste and the parking, and we have a housing presentation for you in February that will finish out the enterprise funds. I'm going to start with the Sanitary Sewer. Just as a reminder, you've seen this slide before. This shows you that the Sanitary Sewer on the city responsibilities is for the collection system. We have the maintenance, obviously, planning and engineering aspects of that. 890 miles of sanitary sewers with 24 pump stations. And then we have staffing of about 90 positions shared with the Stormwater, and then two that are entirely funded out of the Sanitary. We handle at the city the collections, and then the WRA is responsible for the plant and treatment. As far as the budget itself, this year is finishing out nicely. We've got just under $36 million in revenues anticipated for this year and $34.5 in expenditures, so the ending fund balance will be about $6.5 million for this upcoming June 30, 2014. For the recommended 2015, slight improvement, as you see, $38.08 on the revenues and expenditures, just over $38 million. So we're maintaining that surplus, and these budgets do include the payments that we need to make to the WRA as well. We've shown you here how that's broken down, $38.01 in expenditures. The top left is the Des Moines operations, again, dealing mostly with the collection system. The lighter blue below that is the city's issued debt for CIP. Again, that's the pipe that we wouldn't be responsible for within the collection system and pumping stations. On the right-hand side, we've shown you the WRA portions, both operating and debt service, and so you can see there's about a 50-50 split between what the city's responsible for and what the WRA is responsible for. Just a reminder, we are in the heart of the separation of the Sanitary and Storm. There was a decree and a plan established. It's about $270 million in investments. That's shared between the city and the WRA, so they have some of their projects and we have ours, and so we're right in the heart of that, and that will continue on for several more years. And that's what's driving the costs on the system is the capital for separation. I've listed out here what the capital projects look like, both from a historical standpoint. You can see that there's been about $65 million in that top sanitary sewer CIP row to the right over the last 10 years, and then there's some shared projects as well. And then we've listed out, moving forward, individual projects. You've got everything from the typical sewer repairs to the lining, you know, $2.5, $3.00 a year in lining projects, and then you've got individual development opportunities. These are the extensions, if you will. And lastly, you'll see in blue, we have items like the City Tree Replacement Fund. Those are instances where sewer projects are taking out city trees that need to be replaced. The Berlin Pump Station is finishing up, just essentially getting the accounting finished up with that, and that gets you to the total for the capital expenditures for the Sanitary Sewer. There'll be a more exhaustive CIP document that will show every project within the sewer as well, for those members that have not seen that document. So in summary, there are no new rate increases being recommended. The sewer operations are increasing at just under the rate of inflation. The volume increase, the rate increases that were implemented two years ago went out four years, so two of those are behind us. The two remaining rate increases are 9% for this July and another 9% for the following year. Again, those are high, if you will, because of the capital and the debt service that's being implemented. $17 million in the sewer lining, again, that's the $2.5 million a year to $3 million a year that's required of us. That is an unfunded mandate. We've spoken about in the past. That's a requirement that ourselves and other larger, older urban areas are implementing at this time. $28 million in separation projects is what's part of that for the next six years, and again, it continues even beyond that to get to that $270 million total investment. In February or March of this year, we're going to have an opportunity to refund some old debt and get some savings. We had some 2004 sewer revenue bonds. Those call dates are coming up this June, and so we'll be able to do refundings and estimate about $100,000 a year in savings for the next eight to nine years. We're going to take that opportunity that we're in the process of issuing that current refunding and add $4.2 million of new money. Otherwise, we would have issued those separately, so this is an opportunity to save on cost of issuance and get those combined at the same time. So we'll save a little more money on the actual cost of borrowing by doing those together. That will then allow us to wait, probably, what we're hoping is two years before we would have to come back and get more funds. We're looking at late 2015. It would be the earliest we'd have to come back.
So Scott, the $4.2 million is actually included in the budget that you just presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It'll help pay for capital costs, some of which are, most of which will incur in 2015. That's correct. So that is the Sanitary Sewer. Pause for a second here. I'll move on to Stormwater. Again, I started out here just reminding the council and mayor of what this system is. This is the Stormwater. We have fees based on the size of lots and impermeable surfaces, and so you've got responsibility for maintenance of this Stormwater pipe. Street cleaning is part of this. Obviously, there's engineering involved. And then the capital, I'll talk a little bit again in a minute, dealing with flood mitigation, improvements to improve flood mitigation. The system includes 472 miles of storm sewer, the 24 miles of levees, flood walls, and 31 pump stations. Again, there's these 90 positions that are shared with the Sanitary Sewer as well. The budget is also balanced and operating with a small surplus. In the current year, we're looking at just over $19 million in both revenues and expenditures, allowing us to have and maintain a $3 million balance. In '15, the budget's about $20.5 million in revenues with just under $20 million expected in expenditures. So again, we're maintaining a healthy fund balance on the Stormwater as well. As far as the capital projects for Stormwater, again, the 10-year history is shown at the top with about $70 million in investments, and then we have the individual projects as we move forward, and a couple of these are just finishing up. We have the flood mitigation row there is about third down of those middle items. You'll see the Des Moines River Flood Mitigation Improvement with that $20 million figure spread out over the next several years. Again, we have some individual projects, opportunities for development, and then also part of the separation costs are included in here as well. The one new item you'll see down below is the Emerald Ash Bore, the second line item under the tree replacement. We're looking at the Stormwater contributing to that cause of $150,000 a year. Those funds are identified for the treatment portion of the plan that you're going to hear about in the next presentation, and so obviously, the Stormwater benefit is for the ability to save some of the ash trees. So I'll let Public Works get into that more, and I'll be available for questions, but that's shared between the GO side and Stormwater.
Scott, the Streetscape projects, is that the same number that's, I thought we had other funds, or is it in a different?
GO bonds, I think, may be what you're thinking of.
Okay.
Those are in the GO account.
Okay.
My understanding is this $350,000 may be for a Beaver Dell opportunity to take care of some of the Stormwater.
Scott, if I could just interject. These are funds set aside to supplement Streetscape projects where you've got a storm sewer component, but most of the funding for your Streetscape projects comes out of the GO-funded gap improvement program.
So in summary, similar to the Sanitary Sewer, we're not recommending any changes or additions to the rate structure that's already been implemented and passed by the council. Again, similarly, there are two additional rate increases that were approved two years ago at the 6% rate. The $20 million in flood protection is still in there, and we have continuing efforts to reduce costs where available, and as you may have heard, there's engineering's looking at some innovative ways of handling some of the flood mitigation. So that summarizes.
Scott, currently, we have about twice as many miles of sanitary sewer as storm sewer with sewer separation projects. Will those eventually match each other?
That's a great engineering question, actually.
You want to come to the microphone, please?
Mayor, council. Skip, to answer your question, I don't think we'll be adding enough with the sewer separation, enough storm sewer with the sewer separation to bring them even close. The storm sewers just pick up low spots, carry them down to the creekways. The sanitary sewer runs up pretty much every street.
Thank you.
Dave, for the record, could you give your name and title for the?
David Miller, Sewer Enterprise Administrator with the Public Works Department.
Thank you, David. Any other questions for Scott?
I do have one question. Scott, now we have a CIP that stretches out seven years. We have increases in the rates going out two years. Before we approve this with our budget, can you do a little forecast on if we weren't to increase the sewer rates on either, and I'm talking about both sanitary and Stormwater, what that gap looks like now that we have a expense plan? So we know what the expenses are going to be. How far behind are we with the two years of increase that we have?
Okay. So zero out the rate increases and show you what the gap would be?
Correct. And then what the rate increase would have to be to cover that gap.
For the seven years?
On the out-years, on years three through seven, really.
Okay.
Because we have it on years one and two, right?
Yes, on both instances. Okay. Can provide that?
Hopefully, that doesn't go up. You know, we've been building these others, and it'll all continue to pond at the end of this, I assume, at the end of the rate increases. So we've got, we've been building for years now.
Well, you've got an established rate, hopefully.
Right. At this point, what I can tell you is that the rates would still need to be impacted by rate of inflation on just the operational piece, and so you may still see 3%, 3.5% moving out.
Yeah, wages and benefits and all that, you got to.
Yeah, I think part of the analysis will show you that the question is in the out-years, will we have enough cash to pay for some of our own projects, and will the rate be such that it can handle the new debt service that the WRA is taking on?
Yeah.
That's the challenge that.
Yeah. I don't, that's the information I want, because I think council needs to make a really wise decision now if we're going to start telling neighborhoods that we're going to have projects in the system four and five and six, seven years out. If we don't know how we're going to fund them, we need to start addressing that now. When we passed the last rate increase, it virtually took in the entire CIP, you know, the plan over the several years that we approved. Now we can see the end of that funding plan, so we better match that up against our expense plan. So I think you providing that to us will help us. I agree with Bob's point.
Let me just ask you real quickly to clarify. You have pretty much estimated that out to 2020, is that correct, in the budgets that you presented for both Stormwater and the Sanitary, with those increases that have already been passed in place?
Yes. The analysis won't be hard to put together, because we have capital out to 2020, and we have estimates on expenses, operating expenses as well.
All right. Thanks.
Well, if I could just add, I guess the way I would frame Mr. Coleman's question is that you're really asking us to go back and recheck and look at the numbers and make sure that the rates are where they need to be to support the program we have. We've done that work, but I think doing it again and providing to the council is perfectly reasonable, and we'll be happy to do that.
I think you said it exactly right. The only thing I'd say is, we don't have to make sure necessarily that the rates match the program, but we have to make sure the program matches the revenues that we have.
That's good if it works both ways, but yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda is a budget update. I want the city manager, I know that every year we've been pressing quite hard, this council has, to seek input from our citizens in our businesses, given an opportunity to do that, and so we have been planning town hall meetings the past few years, and I think that we're going to continue doing that, and ask the city manager to sort of give us an update on that process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you framed it just right. We're at the point in the process where we've got to get our town hall meeting scheduled. I wanted to talk just a little bit about that and get your direction. So as it looks right now, we're working on a two-year budget plan. Our first year, the FY '15 number, looks pretty good, based on all the work that we're doing today. We're not looking at any increase in tax rates to support the basic budget, other than what might be necessary as a result of the franchise fee vote on March 4th. We're not looking at any layoffs. Police and fire personnel, frontline personnel, sworn officers in both those departments, we're not going to be making recommendations to reduce those. Service levels across the organization should remain about where they are, so this is pretty good news. Those are for the FY '15. We've got a series of recommendations that we'll be giving to you for the FY '16 year as well. The other key thing, as you all know, we have a franchise fee vote coming up on March 4th. Depending on the action of the voters at that time, that will certainly have an impact on your budget. Now, keep in mind, the referendum on March 4th and then the council action on the budget would be March 10th. You have to certify the budget to the state by March 15th, so you've got about one meeting in there where you can act on the budget, which in this case would be March 10th. So the voters will provide their direction on the franchise fee increase on March 4th, then you will come back and you'll make a decision then, either to approve the budget with that franchise fee in place, or approve the budget with the tax rate increase, or whatever direction you would choose at that point. Given all of that, the timing on the town hall meetings is critical. My suggestion to you is that we schedule two town hall meetings for the first week in February. I think that's the week of February 3rd. So I was looking at maybe one on Tuesday and one on Thursday, or however we could do that, but a couple of them. There's been lots of discussion about where to do these. Skip Moore said to me, well, you know what, there's some real virtue in keeping a consistent location. I think that's a good idea. Last time we did it was downtown. I think we used the library at one point, or Botan at another. Those are both good locations, and I think would work well. So what I'm looking for this morning is some input back from you. If that seems reasonable to you, we'll schedule a couple of those the first week in February. I'll work with you on the particular dates, but I want to get that solidified so we can get the advertising out and the date set and the public notified. So again, a couple meetings, a couple of town hall meetings the first week of February is our suggestion to you.
Rick, the intention is one will be during like the lunch hour and the other one will be in the evening?
Skip, we did that last time, and it worked really well. So you have some folks that can make it over the lunch hour, and then we do one sort of early evening, so the folks that can't make it during the day can come in the evening. So yeah, that seemed to work well before, and I'd like to try it again if it's good with council.
So if that's the case then, and I agree with that, I think that was very beneficial when we did it last time. I think it would be important to probably have it downtown, just because it would be easier for people that are already parked or have taken public transportation to come to a meeting that's downtown. So I guess that says the library, unless there's?
Library works, but Botanical Center, I mean, a lot of people's mind, and I haven't checked to see if the space is available. I don't know if my staff knows or not, but there's a big parking lot there, so some people like that, although there's plenty of parking downtown as well.
You know, in consideration of efficiency, is there any reason we couldn't run them both the same day?
You know, we could. Skip, I do think that works, but I've had some suggestion that maybe splitting them apart, you know, like the noon meeting maybe on Tuesday, the evening meeting on Thursday, that works as well, really. Either of those approaches works fine. The one thing about doing them both on one day is if somebody happens to be out of town, then you've really made it difficult for them to do it. So I guess my instinct probably would be to split them apart, one on Tuesday, one on Thursday, probably. So if that sounds okay to all of you, we'll proceed forward. I'll work with the mayor on some of the details. I'll send out sort of a game plan to you well in advance so you can see it, but I want to get the word out so people know and they can schedule it, and you know, we're not talking too far away now, a couple, three weeks, so I'd like to get that going.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. We'll move on to the Emerald Ash Bore Management Plan for the City of Des Moines.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Pat Kozitsa, Director of the Public Works Department. With me today, I have Municipal Arborist David Yon and Deputy Public Works Director Bruce Braun. We also have a number of partners here today that work with us in helping to manage the urban forest. We have from Polk County Conservation Dennis Parker and Natural Resource Manager Mark Dungin. We have Rondell Connor with Metro Waste Authority. We have Todd Reese and Jason Ewers with Mid-American Energy. We appreciate you today. Thank you. We have Ralph Connor, Keith Thornton, and Dick Leiford with Tree Des Moines. And we have Leslie Burkus with Trees Forever, and Mel Pines with Somerset Neighborhood Association. We appreciate you all being here this morning. The city's urban forest is a valuable asset that helps control Stormwater runoff, the heat island effect. It helps us reduce energy cost, enhances property values, and overall air quality. Unfortunately, a portion of that urban forest will soon come under attack from a small green beetle referred to as the Emerald Ash Bore. The Emerald Ash Bore was brought to our attention a number of years ago by Councilmember Moore, who then serving as Municipal Arborist, alerted us to the possible onset of this in the future, and we began preparing to address the onset. Since 2007, we have neither specked nor planted ash trees. In the intervening years, we have removed structurally unsound ash trees and those that required excessive trimming rather than maintain them. We've also modified code provisions, now includes EAB as a nuisance, and we've begun proactive removal of ash trees, all the while now checking each and every one for the possible presence of the Emerald Ash Bore. In addition to our work on the ground, we have been reviewing the research, working with educational institutions, regulatory personnel. We have been working with professionals in the field, as well as our counterparts in cities to the east that have already affected by the Emerald Ash Bore. The information we have gathered has helped us to put together a balance plan for removal, treatment, and replanting in the wake of the Emerald Ash Bore. Today, you're going to see a plan that is both balanced and affordable, a plan that will help us withstand the onset of the Emerald Ash Bore and recover from it. I'll be followed now by our Municipal Arborists, who will share with you the content of that plan.
Good morning, all. David Yon, Municipal Arborist in the Department of Public Works. I'm going to, Director Kozitsa has passed around the vial with an adult Emerald Ash Bore in it. I'm going to pass around a box. You can see the larval stage. This is the critter that does that serpentine wiggling underneath the bark and essentially cuts off the food supply of the tree. You'll see some of that up close and personal. And other parts in here, we see the red dot is covering the, or surrounding the D-shaped, very distinctive exit hole that signals that you've got the Emerald Ash Bore, so we'll just let that float around. So that's our critter. He's from Asia, arrived in the Detroit Windsor area in 2002, and it's gradually made its way both east and west. If it were left to its own devices, it would only travel two to five miles per year, but humans actually move the bug a lot faster, and there are the chief methods, nursery stock, firewood, lumber, and loads of log. You can traverse an entire state or go across the state border in a single day if you have hitchhikers onboard. So where do we stand in the state of Iowa at the present time? You'll see that the eastern one-third of the state has been in quarantine since late summer of 2013. Was originally discovered up in the northeast in Alamackee, but in midsummer, it was discovered in Cedar, Des Moines, and Jefferson Counties, and now we've had a late discover in November of 2013 in Union County, which is to our southwest, and we are now separated only by Madison County. So we're waiting to see what kind of a quarantine zone gets set up, if it'll be set up just around Union, or if it's going to envelop a number of counties, including Polk.
Can you tell us what, how a quarant?
will help us withstand the onset of the Emerald Ash Bore and recover from it. I'll be followed now by our Municipal Arborists, who will share with you the content of that
Good morning, all. David Yon, Municipal Arborist in the Department of Public Works. I'm going to, Director Kozitsa has passed around the vial with an adult Emerald Ash Bore in it. I'm going to pass around a box. You can see the larval stage. This is the critter that does that serpentine wiggling underneath the bark, and essentially cuts off the food supply of the tree. You'll see some of that up close and personal. And other parts in here, we see the red dot is covering the, or surrounding the D-shaped, very distinctive exit hole that signals that you've got the Emerald Ash Bore, so we'll just let that float around. So, that's our critter. He's from Asia, arrived in the Detroit Windsor area in 2002, and it's gradually made its way both east and west. If it were left to its own devices, it would only travel two to five miles per year. But humans actually move the bug a lot faster, and there are the chief methods, nursery stock, firewood, lumber, and loads of log. You can traverse an entire state, or go across the state border in a single day if you have hitchhikers onboard. So, where do we stand in the state of Iowa at the present time? You'll see that the eastern one-third of the state has been in quarantine since late summer of 2013. Was originally discovered up in the northeast in Alamackee, but in midsummer, it was discovered in Cedar, Des Moines, and Jefferson Counties. And now, we've had a late discover in November of 2013 in Union County, which is to our southwest, and we are now separated only by Madison County. So, we're waiting to see what kind of a quarantine zone gets set up, if it'll be set up just around Union, or if it's going to envelop a number of counties, including Polk.
Can you tell us what, how a quarantine operates?
Yes. The question is, how does a quarantine operate? So, this is, these guidelines are established at the federal level, and it moves down through the state level, through the DNR, and Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, and ISU. And when they set up a quarantine, its main goal is to prevent the movement, remember I showed you the slide with the four different types of movement? They don't want ash wood moving out of a quarantine zone and infecting other areas. So, you can keep all the ash you have in your own quarantine area, but they just don't want it to move out. That's the chief purpose of a quarantine. So, we want to tell you a little bit about what we do know about our quantity of ash in the city. We believe we have an estimated 47,000 city ash trees. The large green part, 34,000, that's obviously in the park natural areas. The top 6,000, that's a group we've extracted from the natural areas, and those 6,000 are adjacent to roads, trails, buildings, and parking lots. And so, those three small areas there, six, one, and six, comprise a group of trees that we're calling high-impact trees, those that could affect buildings, people, or automobiles. The next smaller group is, we also know that we have a specified number of ash in the moat areas of parks. So, these are real critical, because they're next to playgrounds and trails that center sports fields. And then, we have 6,000 ash trees on our city streets. So, starting with the low-impact group, these are generic photos. You see what a forest will look like once the Emerald Ash Bore takes hold, and you see ash trees dying throughout a forest. We're of the opinion that we have the national average somewhere in the 14% range. So, if we have X number of trees, 14% of those would be ash. And so, they're largely found in our natural areas, but also some along the riparian borders, Des Moines and Raccoon Rivers, for instance, Four Mile Creek.
What percentage are in the street areas?
Percentage in the street areas? Well, it's 6,000 out of 47,000. Didn't do any calculation on that.
Okay. Give us an idea. That's good.
Yeah. So, now, we're starting, we're talking about these high-impact trees now. We've got 1,000 in the moat areas of parks. Generic picture again, city of Chicago, and you can see the implication there. There's a dying ash tree right next to a trail where a gentleman's walking his stroller. You've got a sports playfield nearby, so it has potential for high impact. 6,000 of the estimated 13,000 high-impact trees are on those peripheral areas. This happens to be a picture heading north on East 30th, so to your left is Grandview Park. I don't know that we have ash trees, but if you had ash trees along that road, you can see the obvious implication that they could die and fall into the road. So, we know we have to manage those.
David, when you say high-impact, and you're, we're talking about them falling into the road, does the whole tree fall in the road, or what actually happens?
Fabulous question. Research has shown us that when an ash tree dies, it desiccates or dries rather quickly within three years, and that's what this photo's kind of showing. There's photos between 2006, fully green trees, 2009, standing dead trees. If I may make a little picture for you, bodily picture, you've got the branches on a tree. Any other tree, when it's dying, you know, a tree has bend moments in its branches. So, usually, a tree dies out here somewhere. It starts disintegrating from the outside in. We know now from research that when an ash tree desiccates so quickly, and the nature of the wood is dry, these branches actually fall off right at the stem, meaning you've got a lot more weight crashing to the ground. And another more alarming feature is that trees actually fail about three feet above the ground, entire tree failure. So, when you consider other trees that kind of die from the outside in, these trees can die right at the stem, or the entire tree fall over within a matter of three years. There was someone tried to do a study in Toledo or Cleveland. They said, "We're going to study over the next 10 years, how long it takes these trees to disintegrate." And they didn't get anywhere near the 10 years. In three years, the study was done, because every single one of them had dried up and fallen over all by itself. So, that's what we're talking about when we say high-impact. They have great danger to the public or our buildings. So, I want to give you a little picture of the street ash, those 6,000 on streets. We've got about 1,100 in the northwest quadrant, 1,800 northeast, 2,000 southeast, and 1,000 in the southwest. So, rather well-distributed throughout the city.
David, do we have locations for all those trees?
We do.
Could I get a copy of those?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We also have some, for the 1,100 in moat areas of parks, we also have some mapping that shows where those park trees are as well. Wanted to describe to you the impact of losing those 6,000 ash trees, just as a sample of losing the entire 47,000. These benefits are well-known. We've done this on the National Tree Benefit Calculator, which was produced by Casey Trees and the Washington DC area, and the Davi Tree Expert Company, and is widely utilized by the U.S. Forest Service, as they explain to people what the benefits of trees are. You see on that graph that stormwater is a key feature, that large orange patch, $66 of value per year. This is stormwater that you're keeping out of the stormwater system, because trees intercept rainwater and don't let as much get into the system. And the green is the property values. It's been shown that there's an enhanced property value when you have a tree next to your property. And so, we have savings with electricity, we enhance our air quality, we take carbon dioxide out of the air, we save on energy bills in the winter. So, all of those, for an 18-inch white ash tree, provides an annual benefit of $235, which extended out over the 6,000 trees, is $1.4 million in annual benefits. And so, not only are we going to have the loss of beauty, we're going to have the loss of environmental benefits and cost savings associated with trees. These are not our trees. We've given you a generic photo of a private residence. We are estimating, and this is common, that in a given locale, you have two to three times the amount of trees that are found on municipal land would be found in private property. So, we estimate between 100 and 120,000 private areas that homeowners are going to have to manage over the next few years. So, we've kind of broached the topic already. How long does it take for that infested ash tree to die? Referencing the North Carolina Forest Service here, within two years of observing symptoms, most of the crown of the tree will be dead. Complete tree death typically occurs within five years, but may take as few as two to three years. And so, the three-year strategy is going to be part of our management of the Emerald Ash Bore. We've tried to practice due diligence, see what our neighbors are doing. Other people have been contending with this for a number of years, and this graph kind of goes from no treatment all the way down to where they're treating a lot of trees. And in Minneapolis, they've elected to treat none. Davenport, which only has 3,000 trees, they're still going to treat a couple of hundred. Kansas City, from their 20,000, they'll be treating 14,000 every three years for nine years, and reassess that strategy. Madison, 21,000 trees, they'll be treating 15,000 of those. Chicago has a whopping 85,000 street ash trees. They're going to treat on a two-year cycle, 35,000 per year, and remove the balance of 15. They're going to reassess that strategy every three years. And Milwaukee, which is often considered the flagship of forestry programs for the entire nation, of 31,000 trees, they're going to treat 28,000 of those indefinitely. So, they're real big on trying to save what they've got. Director Kozitsa has already mentioned that we've begun our program some years ago. We stopped planting and took it off the Recommended Species List in '07. We started removal of small ash trees in '10. We had a community forestry workshop sponsored by the city in 2012. We also had a program for tree professionals called What's Bugging Our Trees, and Emerald Ash Bore was one of the main topics at that session. We've updated our nuisance ordinance in 2012, and this year, we've begun removing large ash with poor structure. Inspecting all removed ash, I've got this little tool here. Also happened to find a tree growing in council chambers this morning. So, this is a sample of an ash tree, would take up about this much space. It would have been about a 16-inch ash. And with this instrument, every time we're taking down an ash tree for any reason, we have not yet discovered Emerald Ash Bore here, by the way, but it's getting close. So, we want to know if and when it gets here, and to what degree. So, we're using this scraper, and you scrape underneath the bark and pull the bark off so that you can find out if it has this serpentine tunneling, or if you can actually find some of the larvae that you saw in your little beaker. And if and when we find it, before someone else discovers it, we'll be reporting it up to the state entomologist, Robin Prusner, who in turn would send it out for sample testing. The federal government would alert her. She would be the one to make an announcement, and then we all start in moving forward together. Idles, DNR, and ISU, and the City of Des Moines. So, we do have a strategy in mind. We want to treat 5,800 of our high-impact trees. The little parts of the graph were numbered 13,000. You see the same 13,000 here, but only in two parts now. They were by location, this is by whether we're treating, or felling, or removing. So, that right side of your screen, we're going to treat 5,800 of those high-impact trees, so that we preserve the environmental benefits, allow time for replacement trees to grow and develop, and keep evaluating the preservation versus removal options.
Do we know how effective the treatment is?
Yes, we do. Treatment is 99-plus percent efficacious. That means that when a tree was treated in the test phase, they could scrape all the bark off an entire tree. I mean, this is the degree they go to for testing. They could only find .2 incidences of any remaining larval insect. So, it's over 99% effective. And it's also rather safe, as I'll demonstrate shortly. So, the chemical of choice will be emamectin benzoate, marketed under the name Triage, not like triage of mash fame, different spelling, but a great play on words. It has been approved for use by the EPA in all states in which the insect has been found. Treatment is by injection. So, here's our sample wood again. We're going to use a three-inch drill bit to drill 1 and 5/8 to 2 inches deep in there. We're going to insert this little plug. This little pug, if you think of a doctor's office, and they have to take something out of a syringe, or a syringe takes something out of a beaker, there's a membrane there. You have to pierce the membrane, so nothing comes out, or air doesn't get in. There's a membrane like that in here, so it's a closed system. Once the chemical is injected in the tree, using this gun, so this has already been placed in the tree, and the gun puts a prescribed amount of injection into the tree. If it were a 16-inch tree like this sample, is it would have about eight injection ports around it, close to the base of the tree. So, then, the needle goes into the injection port, and when it comes out, no chemical can possibly leak out, nor can insects or disease get in. So, it's a closed system. It's effective and rather safe. As already mentioned, it's 99% effective, and all these groups, the University of Minnesota, Michigan State, and Ohio State, all agree that environmental impact from use of this treatment on ash trees is negligible. So, continuing with our plan, you saw on the right side of the graph, the 5,800. Now, we're into the balance of that 13,000. These 7,200 high-impact trees are going to be felled within the next, well, within three years of beginning the program. And then, lastly, that big piece of the pie, the 34,000 low-impact ash in park forests and riparian zones are going to be left to die and fall on their own. And that sounds a little weird when you say it and when you think about it, but that's consistent with what other communities are doing. There is a natural give and take in a forest. Remember, we've got 14%, so in a given forest, you remember the forest photo, there will be some mortality in there, and that's kind of a natural circumstance. This is a more aggressive natural circumstance, but they'll die and fall on their own, and will either have natural succession, or will set about planting some diverse species in their place. We've gotten busy in public works. We've suspended non-emergency forestry operations, and we've dedicated one to two crews to ash tree removal. We have a collaboration with our Parks and Rec Department for proactive removal. We fell the trees. They have manpower and equipment to extract those trees from parks. We also have collaborative agreement with our friends at Mid-American Energy. We are estimating we have up to 1,200 trees, ash trees, under utilities. So, they will be providing us with maps. We'll go out and scout the area. When they're in the area, they have a three-year plan, beginning in '14, to prune all the trees in the City of Des Moines under the utilities. So, they've agreed that while they're there, any ash in the same circuit, they will go ahead and remove the canopy, which is a benefit to us, and then we, as a forestry group, are going to come on after the fact and remove the balance of the tree. And we're going to collaborate with Mid-American Energy Corporation on an effective public notification program. Other collaborative pursuits, you've got these major public landowners in the city, and the possibilities include partnering on public education, ash tree surveys, and disposal alternatives. We can't possibly do all this on our own, so we do plan to get some contract assistance. And if we can get it kicked off in July of '14, we'll expand our current removal program with the addition of contractor services. Disposal of debris, as you can imagine, if you're going to lose 14% of a forest, we're going to have a lot of extra wood debris. So, we'll have temporary city marshalling yards, a place where we can stage our debris. And the final disposition is yet to be determined. We know that the MWA Compost Center and/or the landfill will play important roles in final disposition of wood debris. And then, with every cloud, there's a silver lining. When we do get around to replanting, we'll be planting with diversified species. So, if we have, let's take any number, say the 6,000 ash trees on the streets. If they were all to disappear, we wouldn't go back with a single species. We'd have five or 10 species to replace the single species. We've learned our lesson. So, we're forecasting that through the City Tree Replacement Fund, we'll have an average of 254,000 a year over the next seven. And then, Mid-American Energy Corporation also provides to us through their Trees Please Program, $20,000 annually, for a total of, over the seven-year period, 1.9 million. And at our current price of 280 per tree, we know we can get back close to 6,900 trees for the 7,200 we're calling for removal. Then, of course, there's always opportunities for community planting programs and bare-root planting to get more trees for less money. Public education, we have a component. We'll certainly ramp up our efforts on the city web. We'll have public service announcements. Anytime in advance of removing a tree, we'll have door hangers. After the tree's gone, we'll have door hangers inviting them to apply for, you know, a no-cost tree planting. Workshops, one possibility, there's currently a traveling workshop. I'll be attending tomorrow night in Oskaloosa. Idles, Iowa Department of Agriculture, ISU, and the DNR have this traveling workshop. They have a day segment for professional tree workers, then an evening session for the residents, to get them primed for the onset of Emerald Ash Bore. So, the last slide in my segment here, just want to leave you with this picture, and it's a great picture in Somerset neighborhood. You feel tranquil just looking at this. This neighborhood was entire, almost entirely planted with ash trees. So, everything you see in this photo is ash trees. And so, this is part of the reason we have a strategy to treat trees, so that we can save not only environmental benefits, but kind of save the structure integrity of a neighborhood. And we're going to talk to you a little bit now about the budget impact.
There are many threats to our urban forest. We have oak blight, oak wilt, and there'll be more threats in the future. We have oak blight, oak wilt, and there'll be more threats in the future. But center stage in the next few years will be the emerald ash borer. What we put together here is a balanced plan that will help with removal. It'll also include treatment and through the CTRF and Mid-American Energy Tree Replanting. We're looking at an 11-year plan that involves those elements. That plan, in the current CIP, will total 5.28 million, 880,000 basically a year. Beyond that, another 4.4 million as we extend out to about '24, '25. The sources of funding are GO and Stormwater Utility. We will be reassessing this plan every couple of years. There's a lot of things that can change. There may be a new threat to our urban forest. There may be a decision, more work in-house instead of, you know, as much contracted assistance. We'll be evaluating that as we go along. But we need to plan for the worst, and this involves taking care of that onset of the emerald ash borer. We would anticipate that treatment would commence when the concept of that emerald ash borer being within 15 miles. But we'd like to begin with more ash tree removal this fiscal year coming, '14, '15. So, this program would commence in '14, '15, and continue for the next 11 years. Do we have any questions?
Yep.
Of course I do. First of all, I would think that Ralph Seifert and the Minneapolis Forestry Division would disagree a little bit, and so would a lot of other people's, who the premier forestry operation is. Definitely Milwaukee is, but so is Chicago, and so is Minneapolis. I think that we're being a little bit aggressive on this treatment. I think we need to reassess that, especially since they haven't located emerald ash borer here yet. Little bit bothered by the fact that we've suspended non-emergency forestry operations. It's important that we continue pruning our trees throughout the city. Also, it's a little bit bothersome that we're coming in here wanting to treat the low-dollar emerald, or Marshall seedless ash, when the very high-quality, high-dollar trees we have are oaks, and we're not doing anything for them at all to prevent oak wilt or bur oak blight. And I think that that should be part of this program also, especially in the parks areas of the city. Is any of this money being scheduled for large tree grinding? Because as some of us are aware, our tree dump now is about full. And I don't see any resolve for that with our friends in Pella in the near future. And I think that we need to start grinding some of that up also, because I believe we're going to be taking a lot of ash wood in there in the meantime.
At this point, what we're looking at is working with Metropolis Authority, introducing legislation that allows for the burial of vegetative waste from the emerald ash borer. We see that as the best alternative at this point. We do not have an extensive grinding program as part of this. We continue to look at resources where we can dispose of our wood dump material.
Also, I think we need to take a look at, at some point, we'll be slowing down or suspending any work with the ash trees because we'll be getting near the end of this. Forestry, as everybody knows, is way understaffed. In 1975, we had 45 people, and today, I believe, we have 13. And I think we need to have a plan where this funding continues. We need to triple, at least triple, the size of forestry in order to be able to do what's necessary for forestry to do, if not larger than that. I think it's interesting, we're using Milwaukee as an example. Well, if we're going to follow their model on treating trees, let's follow their entire forestry model. And up there, every tree gets maintained once properly, once every five years. Well, that would be a significant increase here, but I think that we have the support within our neighborhoods in Des Moines. And I know you and I talked about this the other day, Pat, and you said we've got to keep police and fire in line, but police and fire aren't your charge. Forestry is. And I think that we ought to be talking about increasing the size of forestry near the end of this, if not sooner. One other comment, public education for professional tree workers, I believe that ought to be done in the evenings also. We've seen it at Shade Tree Short Course in Ames, that they hold that during the days, and we don't see that many tree professionals from Des Moines up there. And when you talk to them, it's because they're out working. So, I think that when we do it here, we ought to also do them in the evening along with the residents.
Excellent point.
Mr. Coleman?
Pat, thanks. This is, you know, a subject matter I don't know much about. But on the money and the budget, and just council making sure that we're making the right decisions there, can you answer a couple of questions just real quickly? How much does it cost to treat a tree?
There's a couple of estimates that we have. An estimate of $200 by a contractor. We believe that we can organize this with summer help, trained, and certified as, you know, insecticide applicators for about $100 a tree. We can tell you that Milwaukee is organized it. They're at $70 per tree for treatment. So, we are putting a safe margin in there to go up to maybe 100, but we estimate that for treatment.
So, maybe $100 per tree to treat? And is that contemplated to be all done by people, not full-time, regular city staff, then?
At this point, yes.
Okay. How much does it cost to take one of these trees down? I mean, the size and everything varies, but, you know, as we look at the ones that we think that we should take down, I think the number was 5,800. I'm getting my numbers. Is that right? The 5,800, I mean, how much is that per tree?
All right. The, I'm going to drill down here just a little bit. On the high-impact trees, we plan to remove. Those are in peripheral areas where a lot of them can be cut and let lie, okay? And deteriorate in place. If we were taking down a tree on our streets, then it would be about $1,000 a tree. It'd be another $45 for disposal fees, and then we'd have replanting cost.
Okay. So, that, would that be done by city crews?
That would be done under contract as well. We'll be working in collaboration with, like, Mid-American Energy on splitting the effort. But where we would have wholesale removal of that nature, we'd have to do it under contract, and that'd run several million more.
We'd have a strong contract management plan in place to monitor these guys and...
The Public Works Department has put together a contract management plan, and we would utilize that anytime we have a contractor on our premises.
And then, when we think about the replanting of the trees, there was a number in there that we can buy them, or it costs us right now $280. Is that all in, or is that the cost of the tree and then we have the cost of installing them?
It's total cost. Cost of the tree, cost of site analysis, cost of planting.
And then just a technical, about the bug itself. If it, if we let it kill a tree in a forest area and fall and die, then it goes to the next tree, I assume? I mean, it reproduces itself? That kind of, I guess my question is, are we, once we decide that we're going to let it continue on, that we've basically given up the ash in that grove or that area because we're not doing anything to kill it? Is that right?
The answer is that the treatments that we're talking about, where we are going to treat, that will take and kill larvae, and it'll kill any adult eating on that tree. Where we're going to let the ash trees go in the forested park lands and along riparian areas, we don't plan to treat those. And in that case, the emerald ash borer would prevail, and all those ash trees would be affected. When we're infected by the emerald ash borer, it won't be just tree to tree to tree. We see that when the onset of that can spread quickly, and it'll spread pervasively to all ash trees. Those not treated will die.
Okay.
Can I follow up on the treatment question, Pat? The treatment, do we do it annually then from that point forward? Or is it a one-time treatment? Because I know some of the other treatment processes, you have to do it a few years in a row, and there's still no guarantee.
The treatment process we're recommending is on every two-year cycle. This will be an ongoing treatment program until either that tree can withstand the impacts. Maybe it'll go three years. Maybe it can survive up to four years on a treatment. But for now, it's every two years and continues indefinitely. It is part of the ongoing maintenance of that element. As Councilmember Moore points out, why continue to treat this tree when there may be other threats to this urban forest of greater significance? And that's the part of the biannual evaluation we'll be making as well.
So, once you stop treating, the goal is, is that the tree is stabilized and sturdy enough that it can, it will not be impacted by the emerald ash borer?
Eventually, that may happen. It's unlikely at this point. We will be treating probably indefinitely. We don't see that emerald ash borer moving on. Some people still believe Dutch elm disease exists in communities today. I don't think we should plan on that scenario. We should plan, if we're going to treat, to treat until that tree is removed or maybe indefinitely.
Changing and going in a different direction than Pat. With the, if we're actually quarantined, and we don't know that yet, but it looks like there might be the possibility that it could come in the near future, how do we enforce preventing individuals from going into these forests where we've just allowed them to, where we cut them? And how do we keep people from adding to the issue of picking up that wood and taking it across elsewhere?
And then, of course, is the difficult problem, is how strictly are you going to be able to enforce it?
So, do we have an enforcement plan then that we will?
At this point, we would not. I think they're telling agencies, they're telling contractors, do not be transporting that stuff. I think a lot of this moves as firewood. Individuals who have secured some of this material, moved from one campsite to another site. Very unfortunate. Public education is the key to that. Extensive enforcement and money spent on that, I think, would be less valuable than the removal, balanced treatment, and replant.
Pat, can you put up the infestation and quarantine map? Can you put that back up?
Sure.
Back up to you with...
Okay, I'll be there.
I just want to point out that I've spoke with Robin Prusner, the state entomologist, and she's the one that determines the quarantine areas. And as we all know, she's considering just quarantining the whole state now. But they have to quarantine Union County and every county that abuts it. The problem is with Madison County, West Des Moines is actually into Madison County, and they won't quarantine part of the city, not the whole city. So, if they just stay in the Union County area, she said they're more than likely going to quarantine Dallas-Poke and Warren County because West Des Moines extends into Madison County. So, I would anticipate we're going to be in a quarantined area within the next month or two regardless.
And we believe with that quarantine will come a lot more public attention to this matter, a lot more public education. We're preparing for that now.
I'd like to point out also, we've already got a problem with the so-called tree professionals. I wish Tavon Feeley were here. He's already experienced this, where they've knocked on his door and told him that he's got a couple ash trees in his front yard that either need to be treated or come down, and they're maple trees. Our residents are already being taken to the bank by hook and by crook. And I think that part of this program, we should be looking at some kind of licensing of tree contractors, because it's only going to get worse. It's not going to get better.
Ms. Mayor? Well, Carl.
Sure. I see Mel Pinses here from the Somerset neighborhood. Did you want to speak about the impact in your neighborhood?
Thank you, Carl. Mayor County, members of the council, Mel Pinses, 210 East Bundy Avenue, president of Somerset Neighborhood Association. Just a few comments, that tree, that picture that Pat showed of Somerset, taken by me. We're really proud of our trees in our neighborhood. I took that picture, you know, obviously, I just didn't take it a few weeks ago. It was taken some time ago. But I want to begin just with a couple of brief comments in support of the discussion this morning. But an analogy, with the economic downturn across the country in the last decade, a lot of people, there was the little analogy that, well, it's a recession when the other person loses their job. It's a depression when I lose my job. Des Moines is going to be in a depression very soon with this emerald ash borer situation. We've heard about it for a decade. We've heard about it regionally for five years. Obviously, it's here in Iowa. It's going to be here as well. My neighborhood, we're just south of Army Post Road, near Southeast Fifth. Some of the landmarks in my neighborhood are the Des Moines Police Academy and South Suburban YMCA. Our neighborhood was once part of historic Fort Des Moines. The entire square mile down there was part of the fort. Our neighborhood was primarily open ground. It didn't look like this. It was used for training, gardens, et cetera. When the federal government gave it to Des Moines in the mid, or the early '70s and the police academy was built, they were going to have a high-speed driving course there. I got the old plans for that. That never materialized. So, by the early '90s, the city sold it. A developer platted it. We're the largest kind of single use in the neighborhood. We have 90 houses on 90 lots there. And we really didn't have any trees in the neighborhood. Well, along with the plat came, hey, let's put one little ash tree in front of every house. Now, whether that was wise to do that or not, you know, I guess I wasn't around then, but I might have suggested a little more diversity. But nonetheless, the trees in our neighborhood are now more than 25 years old. And you can see what we've got for a canopy there. I have a nice neighborhood, but I don't have any architecture like Beverdale. I don't have any history like, you know, south of Grand, Ingersoll, Woodland Hills, anything like that. What we've got is the character that the trees provide to our neighborhood. There's a lot of environmental benefits to trees, you know. David can talk about that. But it's a quality of life for us. And really, bottom dollar, which I think those of you that know me like, know that I like to go to, it's really about property values. If I didn't have these trees in this neighborhood and you drove down the street, it would look like just kind of a blase subdivision plat development. These trees give us value to our properties. Ask any real estate agent, ask any landscaper, ask any developer, if you've got landscaping, if you've got trees, you've got value. So, there's a tax-based value to my neighborhood and what these trees provide us. But the concern I've got today, and I've talked with Pat a bit about this, forestry has always been great for our neighborhood to work with. For the decade that I've been president of my neighborhood, they've been great to work with. But right now, with the 90 lots at very minimum, just to give you a survey, we're missing trees on four of those lots. So, we're down 4.5%. You know, very small math here. Those trees that were taken out, they were taken out last two years, all ash trees. They were diseased or damaged, not by EAB, as David mentioned. But forestry's been great to work with us to get the trees out. As a courtesy, they do notify the resident if the tree's taken out, the street tree. They put a little hanger on the door, and they say, hey, if you want a tree installed, we'll come do it. Well, most neighbors don't pay attention to that, or the kids tear it off of the doorknob, or, you know, one or the other spouses reads it and thinks the other spouse will take care of it. Nonetheless, we don't have four replacement trees yet. So, I've been working with Pat to find a way that, hey, if the neighborhood is willing to sponsor, I guess you could say, foster parenting that tree the first year or two as needed to keep it watered and mulched, we're happy to do that. But I'd like to find a way as policy from the council that if trees are taken out, we do have a plan upfront to get that curbside tree replaced. Because I'm not here to argue if treatment's the way to go. I'd love it if you could preserve my trees. But if treatment is not the way to go, and trees are going to have to be cut down because they're either already damaged or diseased, what have you, if we cut all these down at once, we're going to hurt property values. We're going to hurt people's interest in either staying in the neighborhood or buying a house there. So, if we can get infill trees going now where we've got room, or maybe there isn't a tree on a corner lot somewhere in a side yard, let's get a tree in there now. Let's actively work to do that. We're happy to be partners to do that. So, I guess what I'm, to sum it up, we're looking for help partnerships. These ash trees, just like oak trees in many other neighborhoods, they affect the quality of life in our neighborhood. We want to keep our quality of life and our property values up. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mel.
Mel, can you guess how many people have ash trees on their private property?
There are probably a few who do, but the contractors would plant a tree in the front yard on the person's lot. Those were usually ornamental trees. We've got birches. We've got different flowering crabs. I don't know if a tree was required in the backyard. Skip, can you recall how site plan worked for that?
No. Soyage landing was the first place we required that.
Okay, yeah. So, aside from, again, a few intermittent trees, like I have a fence line that borders Old Fort Des Moines, so, wow, you know, one of them's a mulberry. We've got some other tree variety, but by and large, I would say the ashes are primarily the street trees in my neighborhood. Good question. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, appreciate the opportunity to say a few words about this. Maybe to start off, I want to say that, first, I really appreciate the work that David and Pat and their staff had done. I think this is a great presentation, great recommendation to the council and the community, and I couldn't be more supportive of it. But I want to talk just a little bit about the money. But I want to talk just a little bit about the money aspects of this. So, in the six-year capital improvement program, last year, we had roughly zero in our budget for Emerald Ash Bore and tree treatment or removal. This recommended CIP, you're going to have 5.28 million in the six-year CIP, and another 4.4 million beyond that. So, in total, you're looking at a funding allocation that's pretty close to $10 million dollars over the period of the program. Most of that, not all of it, most of it's coming out of your GO bonds. So, it's property tax-supported. And keep in mind that we're trying to keep tax rates down. We're trying not to increase our, the size of our capital program. So, essentially, when this happens, we're having to go into the program and look where, where can we tighten our belt, where can we reduce funding, because we think this is very important. We have to take it on. But it's clearly, clearly a major issue in terms of how you balance the budget forward, unless we're willing to increase tax rates and generate new revenue for the city. So, I think that's a profound point, and I want to make it clear. And I think there are two things that fall out of that, that I would have you all think about. One is, any opportunity we have as a city to collaborate with others in trying to find ways to keep the cost of this down would be worth, would be worth the time. In David's presentation, he outlined some other entities that we can collaborate with. I think those are important. I think there are some beyond that, maybe some other suburban communities. Just think of the contracting process. If you can put more entities in to contract with people to do this work, maybe you can keep your per-unit cost down a little bit. So, those kinds of opportunities to collaborate with others and looking for ways to economize the program, I think is really important, and I'd urge you to do it. The second thing that sort of relates to that is, this problem is not pervasive across the state now, but it's becoming that way. And I think there's a message in there from a legislative standpoint. If the entire state's facing this problem, it seems to me it's an issue that our legislature and our governor ought to be thinking about and taking up. You have no other ready funding source than the good old general obligation bonds, or maybe a little bit of stormwater utility. You don't have a revenue source for this. Skip Moore talked about wanting to increase funding for trees. Well, I wish I could say to you that that was going to be an easy thing to do. It is not going to be easy to increase funding, given all the other demands. You don't have a dedicated revenue stream for this. You've basically got a rob from Peter to pay Paul here. So, I would suggest there ought to be some creative thinking into maybe a state program. Maybe there's some way to generate revenues for this that would offset costs going forward. Because like so many things, when you have an urgent need, if you don't have a revenue stream with it, it's very hard to do. And I'll give you one really great example where this council has done this, and it's made a huge difference in the city. Stormwater utility. You know, 30 years ago, you didn't have a stormwater utility. You do now, and it's allowed us to move forward and make a lot of really great improvements in the city in that venue. That used to be a program, by the way, that was almost entirely funded by GO funds. We did a little bit of assessment, but mostly it was coming out of property tax dollars. Now, you can pay for it out of stormwater utility. You don't have to touch your GO bonds for the most part. Maybe something similar here could be thought about. I'm not smart enough to tell you exactly what that funding avenue would be, but I think it's a conversation. Because it's so pervasive, and because the financial impact on the state and communities in the state is going to be so great, that it's really an issue that deserves the attention of the state legislature and the governor to help you find some ways to maybe fund this program that aren't there today. The state has excess dollars. I hear a lot about that. Well, here's a program you could have, if the state funded that a little bit, that would help you with your budget, but would also be something that would benefit the whole state. So, Mayor and Council, this is a great program. It's strong. It's obviously something that we're starting anew. It's going to have to be monitored, as David and Pat said, as you go forward, and tweaked, and all of that. But it's clearly a necessity, clearly a necessity. We can't back away from it. The impacts in the community are way too profound. But I think there are some things you can do, if you're really committed to this, that will make the problem better going forward. Thank you, Mayor, for the chance to say a few words.
Christine? One quick question, or just one comment, and I'm not sure who the Mid-American Energy people are, but I appreciate all the partnerships that we have out here. But I have to just share with you, when I saw the dollar amount from Mid-American Energy, I thought it was pretty minimal. And I would like to ask Mid-American to go back and, with all due respect, look at increasing that dramatically based upon the amount of funds that the cities are required to put in there. And I agree with your comment on the legislature. It is a one-time expense, and those are the types of items that they would be interested in looking at.
I'd like to make one, or sort of a series of comments. I think our goal here, and I look at David and I look at our staff, obviously, and everybody that's interested in trees, is to improve our urban forest. And, you know, a number of years ago, we had this city flown. We were one of, I think, Skip, as I remember, four cities in the United States that actually got this whole LIDAR, six cities. And so, we have an idea at that point in time, what our canopy was. We had a goal also at that time to improve our canopy in the city, and this council sort of committed. I remember we planted some trees over by the police station, that we were going to improve our tree planting and plant with our businesses and with our citizens about 100,000 trees. I'm not sure where we are in that process, but I think we've removed a few also. So, I think I would sort of like to know at this point, if we looked at the goal of improving that urban forest, what it was at that time of that LIDAR flight, and what it is today, and then what our goal is moving forward in terms of improving that tree canopy. Is I listened to removing 7,200 trees and letting the rest of them just fall in place, and we're going to replace 6,850. That's sort of a shortfall in terms of the trees. And certainly, when you have fairly large trees that David pointed out, even this one that he found growing in City Hall today, we're going to, certainly, when you replace this with this, your tree canopy is going to be greatly reduced for at least 20 years. So, we have to think about that. Secondly, I think that, I love the idea of this policy to partner with businesses and with residents, and how it is that we make some of that happen, and how we can incent and encourage more planting of trees in the city. And I certainly would like to push forward a policy to make that happen. And I think maybe, David, with your department, and with Tree Des Moines, and Trees Forever, and everybody else that's interested in it, that we can put together a policy that would be somehow supportive of everybody planting more trees for all the reasons that were pointed out earlier. I'm now, put my hat on as a resident. I was with one of our councilmembers one day, and I was in my neighborhood, actually. And I, there was a truck out that was preparing to trim a tree, or maybe even take one down. And I sort of queried this individual a, what were they doing, and I'd seen what they were doing. And they had a bucket, which, so they had a lot of equipment. The thing that I was, I began to ask him, knowing what we're going through with our own staff, and how we want to train them up, and everybody needs to have proper training, and all the safety issues, I asked this individual if he'd received any training. And he said, well, yeah, they, the day he got hired, they showed him how to run the saw, and they showed him how to put on his hat. And that was pretty much it. And I noticed that the reason I kind of asked him that is because they were hanging out of the bucket that they had, and he was not secured or tethered, didn't have his helmet on, and with one hand with a saw, was leaning out over whacking at a tree. I want to just reinforce what Skip said. I think we've got to make sure for the safety of not only the people that are trimming trees, that are obviously going to be hired up. I've gotten some notes on my door over the past couple of years of individuals saying they're going to trim your tree, and give me a call. And I'm sure we're going to see more of those folks. I think we've got to make sure these people are well-trained. They know what they're doing. They know when they need to do the work, whether it's on an ash tree, or it's on an oak tree. I mean, I'm amazed at people that want to trim oaks in the middle of the summer, and that have no idea what they're doing. And I just, I think that for the improvement of our urban forest, not only do we have to think about planting the trees, we've got to make sure that the people that are doing the work on the trees know what they're doing and not further damage it. And I think that we ought to look at a policy that requires, and a company to be certified, so that our citizens know when somebody comes to the door, that they actually have somebody that knows what they're doing, that their house is going to be safe, their family's going to be safe, and that actually they properly trim and care for the tree as it should be. So, that's just sort of a recommendation, Mr. Manager, that I would like to pass on to you, and then to work with our staff to see if we can't pull all these comments that have come out of this meeting today together, so that we can spend some time really with a strong plan to improve our forest. Not just cut it down and figure out how to plant a few trees over time and make it. We need a really strong urban forest plan for the long range. Any other questions anybody has? I think that's the last item on our agenda, with the exception of...
I think some comments are going to have public input.
Right now. So, let's open it up for public comment. We have a well-known individual coming up to the podium.
My name is Ralph Connor. I live at 1612 York Street. I was the first board-certified master arborist in the state. I've been doing this for about 52 years. I'm past president of the Iowa Arborists Association. I did have a first-class arborist license in the city of Omaha. I was a certified arborist, was a Nebraska Arborists Association. Since I retired, I gave that up because I got tired of paying for it and not doing anything with it. At any rate, I'm pleased and disappointed that we're here. I'm pleased because we're here. Finally, we're actually looking at this problem and doing something about it. Disappointed because it took this long to get here. This isn't something that just showed up. This has been talked about for a long time. I'm a little disappointed because the indication is that we collaborated with the forestry on this process, and we did not. We don't agree with this at all. There are places where you might want to treat trees. If you have a specimen tree in a specimen location, some on our board have mentioned there are some ash trees behind the art center. They might be worth the investment. But stop and look at what you're doing here. And we're saving some money on the short run. There's no question about it. But if you take the city's numbers, $200 to treat, $1,000 to remove every two years, 10 years, you're still treating the tree. The trees are going to live to be 75 years old. Now, at the end of 10 years, if you decide to remove the tree, you still got the $1,000. Where's the savings? I can tell you from my viewpoint, when I go out, and I've been asked this question a million times, I've been made, I've been made, excuse me, I've made presentations to a lot of people on this problem. And certainly, I want to qualify this. There are a lot of people sharper than I am. I really hope or appreciate it. Mark could even get involved in this conversation. I have a great deal of respect for him, too. But for right now, when I'm talking to a homeowner, I will tell them, if you're my age, you've got a really nice ash tree in your front yard, your budget allows, you know you're not going to see another tree that size, go ahead and treat it. I've got 10, 20 years. Then go ahead. But if I'm talking to a housing association, they're responsible for the monies for that whole area. They have to look at how they're going to manage this on a long-term basis, much like you. Treating it does not make a lot of sense. Spend the money now. Get them out. Begin the replacement program. If you don't want to clear-cut an area, take them in pieces. Do some and plant some. The key is to plant now. 10 years from now, you're going to have at least a start on something. That's first. Second, and this really disappoints me, here we are, we're talking, what was it, next year's budget, $1 million, something like that? We're scratching and kicking and screaming for $400,000 to do an inventory, which is where you should start to begin with. How do you know what you've got out there, what you're going to take care of, or what your plan is going to be, if you don't know what's there? I mean, otherwise, what you're going to end up doing as time goes along is running around all over town putting out fires. You have to have a plan of some type put in place, so everybody knows from start to finish what you're going to do. That really starts, every one of the cities, including Milwaukee, started with a tree inventory. That's key to almost everything you do. I was amazed, or I would think, for instance, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. There seems to be a nice surplus there. There's nothing, there's very few things that contribute more to store, or stormwater retention than the street trees, or the trees in our area. Now, it is true, in our area, the stormwater problems we have are caused by trees somewhere else, but at least it's a contribution, and I would think that would fit pretty nicely. I was really pleased that we're seeing some collaboration between Mid-America and the city of Des Moines. That's a win-win. Everybody wins with that. They have a lot less to try and take care of in a few years. The city gains. This is, we're dealing with ash trees today, and I hope some of you remember, I talked to the group here, group, council. I remember now, five, six years ago, about a perfect storm coming. We have bur oak light. We have oak wilt. We have Dutch Elm disease. I think we have Emerald Ash Bore here now. When it has been found, it's usually been there five to seven years. So, and we've also got on the horizon Asian Longhorn Beetle and Thousand Kanker. Who knows what's after that? Now, I'm one of the few arborists in the city, perhaps Skip maybe, that was involved in the Dutch Elm disease thing way back when. And believe me, there are going to be people coming out of the woodwork. Everybody with a pickup and a chainsaw is going to cut trees. It becomes hazardous. I think the city, on the other hand, is going to be really surprised. If you start putting this out to bid on a big lump-sum basis, use diameter inches, or whatever criteria you want to use classified trees, because you'll have too many to try and do one at a time, you'll be surprised at the rates that you get. But I am a little curious about the marshalling yard. Is that going to be free to tree companies and to private residents? Because their wood's got to go somewhere. Are you going to set up your marshalling yard for city staff, and then just have everybody else pay to take it somewhere else? Are you going to be able to do that? You're going to have a huge amount of wood. The amount of wood alone is going to be massive, just massive. Those are just a few things that I've got, and I've got a whole bunch of other stuff. But I understand, I think I've got five minutes or something like that, so I have to sit down and shut up. But when you do do the replacements, generally, it's 20% for species, 10% set for genus. The trees, Tree Des Moines is going to have another tree doctors in March is our plan right now. That was very well-accepted. The last one we had, I was very pleasantly surprised. They shut me off there, too. So, anyway, if you have any questions?
Ralph, I have a question. We've offered Tree Des Moines a challenge grant of $100,000 for tree inventory, and the Tree Des Moines is attempting to raise the other $300,000.
Right.
I know this is kind of a dumb question, but what if we were to increase and make it a true match? We raised the $200,000, and then you guys raised $200,000 to match. And how much sooner do you believe you'd come up with that $200,000 compared to 300?
I have no clue. I have no clue. We're a fairly young group. We don't have a lot of history. It's hard to go out with your hand out and say, we need $200,000. Will you please give it to us so we can have a match? I'm sure we will carry a lot of weight, because there are people that want to see things happen, and they like to see an investment from others before they put their money in. And what it does is, it gives us a little more credibility when we're trying to collect, or maybe collect is the wrong word, but solicit funds. But it's something that you really need to consider, folks, and I know that... But it's, it's something that you really need to consider, folks, and I know that, I'm up here, I'm playing the, the bad guy, because, you know, as a, as a council, you really want to rely on your staff, and you almost have to depend on them, because there's nobody that can know everything, so you, you count on your staff to, to do the research and know what they're doing, and, and I'm sitting here contradicting what they said, and I know that's difficult, it's very difficult for me, I know David, I know Pat, and I like them both, it's, it's not a pleasant position for me to be in either. But I think you need to look at some of these other things, because this is a commitment that is really, truly a long-term commitment, and there's really no light at the end of the tunnel. Once you get into it, it's kind of like having an old car, and you keep sinking money into it to fix it, and you keep sinking money into it to fix it, and pretty soon you've got to say, I got to stop, but I've got so much money into it, and you just keep going. So I would think that that would be the case, it's just, it would give us more credibility, whether, would it speed up the odds? I'm sure it would, how much, I have no idea. But it's definitely the place to start.
Ralph, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to make a comment? You know, I, I, just as sort of a follow-up to sort of what Ralph said, and, you know, we think about what we're going to try to do here in the city of Des Moines, I really feel a, a commitment on the part of a number of organizations, residents, businesses in the city to, to work on this, and hopefully we can find some partners at the state and the federal level as well. But if, one is to spend time over in DNR, they've got some pictures of what appears to be the drawings of the forest cover in the 1850s in Iowa. And then they have another one that shows it today. And they estimate, at least some of the ones that I talked to a number of years ago, that about 70% of that tree cover on the state of Iowa has been removed. And we've got to figure out how to get more of that down there, reduce flooding, a lot of the issues that we have to deal with here in the city of Des Moines, obviously happens because the watershed above us has been decimated in terms of the, the tree cover and other vegetative cover that's up there that used to absorb water and get it back in the ground. And I think that we need to, to preserve our assets in the state of Iowa, need to look at a long-term process, how it is that we protect Iowa property and businesses and individuals from flooding and all the damages related to it, erosion issue that, that happens, and certainly the, beginning to improve the natural absorption and, and get more water back in our aquifer as opposed to sending it down to the Gulf of Mexico along with our valuable Iowa soil and all the chemicals and everything else that's down there. I will just finish with, I testified in Congress on some flooding issues, and I was sitting next to the mayor of New Orleans, who, as we were waiting for the committee to come in for our testimony, said, just sort of as a joke, I think, said, you know, we call that area where the Mississippi flows into the Gulf of Mexico? And I said, what? He says, Little Iowa. We can kind of chuckle about it, but quite frankly, it also is sort of an awakening. We need to do something, we need to do something now. So for all you who are interested, come on back tonight, we're going to have some more fun. This meeting's adjourned.